I apologize, but it is now seven o'clock. I would like to call the meeting to a close. Welcome everyone here and online. Thanks for joining us. And our first item on the agenda is an executive session for the strategy and preparation of contract negotiations with non-human personnel. Can I get a motion?
We adjourn to executive session for the purposes of strategy and preparation for contract negotiations with non-human personnel to adjourn to executive session.
That's accurate.
It's been moved by Emily, seconded by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We will be actually Sean?
Yes.
Emily?
I'm...
Margot? I call?
Yes.
And I vote aye as well. We will be back at 7:20. Great, well, welcome everyone again. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. Before I ask for hands for public comment, I do want to state that the public comments, it's three minutes. It's not a back and forth. It's also your three minutes include questions and everything else that you want to say. So members of the public can raise their hands here or digitally. You can comment on any items on our agenda or anything else. And I will ask the clerk to keep an eye on it. Do we have any public comments?
As of right now, your hands up. We have Brian for that.
Mr. Cobell. Hello. Sean, you speak. The majority of our...
Mr. Cobell, if you could take a pause. We're just trying to get the audio to work.
I don't think your microphones are on either side.
Mr. Cobell, would you try speaking again?
I guess my time is running out.
Yes, your time is starting now.
Good evening, residents of Bedford. I choose to use my legally protected right of public comment to make the residents of Bedford aware of crimes of their Bedford Police Department, not to myself, life, children, and property, and the past and current efforts of the office of the town manager, and in conjunction with the Bedford Select Board to cover up these past and present crimes and civil rights violations. The Cobells, in the very near term, will be providing the residents the who, the what, the when, and the where of these crimes and civil rights violations, and identify the involved officers who have been removed because of such crimes in the guise of retirement rather than an FBI investigation. The Cobells, multi-generational residents of 35 years, will be publicly introducing by way of website and public forums the chronological order of crimes, civil rights violations, misprocedure, and protocol of the tactics that the Bedford Police have illegally enacted upon the victims of 124 North Road, past officers and present. We will do this not to spite the town of Bedford or to smear, but in an effort to magnify the injury and persecution and prosecution that has been administered by the ex-concurrent police chiefs and officers, the ex-town manager and present, and the present and all past chairs of the Select Board, solely in the pursuit to make all the abuse stop. My life is under threat by the Bedford Police as it has, and the survival of my family lays in the balance. I am an innocent man, as I have been my entire life. I like that I am proud of, and I can account for every day. And the police have done everything in their power and beyond over three years to alter this fact. Only to be defeated in the courts every time. It was and is simply a witch hunt of epic proportion, a sinister and diabolical plot, a conspiracy that traverses the ranks of the department and the Bedford Town executives. Our experience has been a cross between the past movie thrillers, Cape Dare and The Fugitive. However, this is no movie. It's our life, and it's based on the facts and evidence of incidents over three years, a factual, devastating, and damning review of the town government and the actors that comprise our police department. Thank you, residents of Bedford, for your time in understanding in our family's time of unwarranted demise that has been brought on by the Bedford Police and the Middlesex County DA Office. Please stay tuned, and we will have further comments on our progress at the next and future Select Board comments on the public comment section as available. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item, which is a town manager contract approval. So we do the... Well, first of all, I want to publicly thank you, Paul, for helping us on this and working on this, so...
Sure, you want me to say a few words?
Yes, please.
I don't know how much you want me to say, but you can stop me. Yeah, so the board voted tonight to approve the contract to propose to Mr. Hanson, which we will deliver to him after the edits have been made and approved on, hopefully, on Monday's board meeting. And the start date would be September 25th. And 5-0 vote. Is that enough? Do you want to take more particular...
I think that's good.
Yeah.
Any questions? I think I'm set.
I forgot to mention, do you think he might be willing to come to Bedford today? Just say hello and walk around.
I think we could probably push his arm. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that is a great idea. I thought of that earlier. I forgot to bring it up. That was a Tony Joe gambling... Yeah, yeah. Started with first.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Paul for your efforts in negotiations. I know we're all looking forward to having him on board. I'm happy to make that motion unless somebody has something they want to say first. Okay. So I believe that the Select Board approved the agreement between the town of Bedford and Mr. Hanson as amended pending approval.
That's accurate.
It's been moved by Emily, seconded by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye to that's 5-0-0.
Tom should give a motion.
I'm not sure. Yeah, we don't know how to turn it.
So if you push them on the volume to hold it, and it will turn green. It just takes them a minute. It's that little depress button. The one on the front?
Yeah.
Oh, in the... Both have got it.
Oh. Is it turning on? Is it on? Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Sorry about that. Are we ready?
Okay, should we do a big thank you to the interim town manager? I forget her cause of health.
Yes.
Amy Colley has been fantastic and will be until the 25th, so... Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, we really appreciate it.
We're very fortunate.
There's times that we're creating that... We can share... We can share what's happening. Oh, my one eye. Oh, okay.
Contracts and lease. We have an extension for the Bedford Historical Society for the Old Town Hall and a public safety contract. Colin?
So this is not actually an extension. That's what we originally thought the request was. But it's actually a request to prorate their rent. So their contract is actually, wasn't really a contract approved last year. So they are asking for a prorated rent due to the AC not working. It was a problem we were well aware of, but we couldn't really address because of a supply chain issue. So as of today, I believe, that is back up and running. So what the Historical Society is requesting, that they prorate their rent for, you know, two or three months due to them not being able to use the room or rent it out. They actually had some rentals canceled because of the lack of AC. So we also have our facility's Dr. Ron here to answer any questions. But essentially, they haven't been able to do a rental since June 25th. If you're doing a two-month proration, it would be $5,833. If you're doing a three-month proration, it's $8,750. So that is up to you. I don't know, Ron, do you have anything to add?
No, that's... Well, those are the facts.
Can I just ask? As of when was the AC restored to function?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Okay, so it has to have been the 23rd of August. Okay.
Emily, did the lack of AC affect the entire building? Or was it really just the third floor? I'm thinking of Bedford TV, which I know has a lot of equipment that needs to stay cool as well.
So there was an issue. The third floor was definitely out. We had a problem on the first and the second floor, but we were able to fix that much quicker. Parts were more available. We were able to do that in-house as well with a little help from an outside vendor. So that was... They always had one stage of cooling. The second stage was out. So they were not as cool as they could be, but they were comfortable. All right, Paul.
I guess my only thought is that...
Second floor? First floor. First floor, yeah.
Wanted to come to us with a symbol of her lust, already purged us to entertain it, though it was perhaps less as... Less than that.
Sean?
Yes, I'm a little confused, because I know initially that our was extending the lease by the amount that was lost to the AC. And part of that was just because of the loss of use. But part of it also was to renegotiate the overall contract. So if their request now is to prorate, I understand that, but where does that leave time to renegotiate the overall contract?
So the contract is good for three years. So it was a three-year contract. I think because of some transition, there's some people thought the lease was expiring in August, but it's not. The lease expires two years from now. So I think the issue is more the cost of the contract because they weren't able to use it. Am I correct there?
Can I ask, Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Is that consistent with your understanding too?
Yeah, my end of extending the lease?
Well, prorate versus extending, and then also...
Yeah, I think the, you know, the letter that was sent to the board requested a three-month extension because there were no rentals available in June, July, and August. And in fact, you know, they've... People had inquired about even September going forward, and nothing... The AC wasn't working. So they thought, the board thought, the reasonable request was to extend the lease three months and also to be able to sit down and negotiate going forward the next lease. But because, you know, as Ron knows, it was... Anybody that had gone up to the third floor, they were taking readings every day, and it was in the 90s. So it just wasn't working. And it's an old HVAC system. And Ron has done his best to keep everything working properly, especially on the second floor. The first floor was fine, but the third floor just was not... You know, wasn't inhabitable. It was hot. So three months, we asked for an extension for three months. And then also, the lease, I believe, had... We needed to give notice to the town by August 31st in terms of what we wanted to do going forward. So that's what we did. Asked for three months extension, and then at some point to talk with the town. We had worked through facilities in the past, and, you know, Ron is very familiar with the building. And so we'd be very happy to be able to talk to Ron going forward about the next year's lease. But so, bottom line is, we had requested a three-month extension of the existing lease.
I just asked Paul, but is a three-month abatement of rent acceptable solution? Because we're not actually talking about, I think, extending the lease. We're talking about, you don't have to pay for these three months because it wouldn't matter.
Right. That would also be acceptable, I believe. The three months abatement of the lease.
Can you please still have to speak?
Oh, sure.
Again. Thank you.
In the hour of...
You can speak into this phone.
I can hear you great, but nobody else.
Yeah, I was having a tough time too hearing you. So, yeah, so the three months that we weren't able to rent was... We felt that either the idea was to extend it three months more, talk to the town about going forward, you know, renegotiating the lease. So if an abatement, a three-month abatement, is... I think that would be acceptable, I believe.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So when you said that you needed to get notice in August, that that notice is premature because the lease goes through 2025.
The lease, well, it's three one-year leases. So the lease ends in October 31st of this year.
We're looking at...
But the lease calls for, if there were issues, to notify the town by August 31st.
So I think this is where the point of confusion is. Because I am looking at a lease. The term says, "The term of this lease shall be for three years, commencing on September 19th, 2022, and ending on September 18th, 2025." The lease that we have before us, was that the executed one going?
Yeah.
Yeah. It is a three-year lease, and that's why I think there's a... There's a...
Okay. My understanding is that it was for three years, but it was one-year terms through October 31st for the first term. And if we, if we had any issues, to notify the town by August 31st of this year.
No, that's in the document we're looking at.
So... And this is...
I mean, I see this three-year installments.
That's why I was just asking to make sure that it was in fact the final version of the lease, because the copy that we have is not a signed copy.
That's not the final version of the thing. Because, and I thought we had the... We had the final version to discuss. The final version, the last one that I saw, and I was... And Tom Kinzler signed it, was that it was a one-year lease. Three one-year leases, and it ended October 31st. And if there was any issues to talk to, to reach out to the town, we would need to give notice by August 31st. And that's why I believe we received a letter from the society saying that. So that, I don't... I'm not sure if that's the...
And I also talked to Mr. Rosen, so... I mean, either way, I think a three-month abatement is, if it's fair to the society, they're in favor of it. I also am in favor of opening up discussions again, because this is something new. And I think the first one was kind of based on Bedford TV, which is, as we know, is different in... Different people and sort of different people. So, I mean, that was my indication when talking to Mr. Rosen, that initially, the three-month extension hardly sort of allowed reopening of negotiations, so...
Yes, and that was my understanding also.
Yeah, so, I mean, however this fits into this lease legally, I'm supportive of allowing more discussion about the lease, whether it's discussion about the existing lease or whether it's the every-year lease that we talked about.
Well, can I just ask? Are there other terms that, having just a year ago completed the contract, the lease, satisfactorily? Are there specific other terms that the Historical Society wants to address to change the lease?
I believe there are. And I'm not in... You know, I don't want to, certainly don't want to renegotiate the lease here. But I think it's important that we need, you know, we've given the notice as of prior to the end of this month, and that we just need to sit down and talk with the town about going forward for the next remaining two years of that three-year lease. I really believe that... I don't know if that's the final lease, that's the signed lease, because the one I... The last one I saw, and I didn't bring it with me, had three one-year terms. And it would end October 31st, and then the new lease would start November 1st. And if there was any issues that the society or the town had, that we would give notice as of August 31st, so...
Well, I think before we take any action, I would like to see the actual executed lease to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and I can get, you know, I would like to get you the... The package you don't have, or you should have, the final signed lease. But as Sean mentioned, that's, you know, that's the reason why we sent the notice to the board and requested three months extension of the existing lease for, you know, it makes sense, an abatement of those three months for the first year. And with the ability to sit down with the town and go and talk about the next year.
So maybe what makes sense is to vote up if you're not ready. Convenient that we are maybe on Monday, make some look at the...
We have that, we have that.
Okay.
Can I ask you a few questions before we make the motion? And I am supportive of it. If it's uninhabitable, it's uninhabitable. Two questions. One is, the amount... What was the amount, do you know, of rentals that were visited and taken because of this? Would it exceed the $6,000, or would it be self-employed?
Self-employed. I don't know, self. I mean, that is... That's also an issue.
Right.
But, yeah, it would be self. I don't have the numbers.
But the magnitude, would it be like $1,000, or would it be...
It may... I would think it would be, and I'm just... Don't quote me.
Yeah.
I would think maybe three, four thousand.
Okay, so that is getting up there. I guess the other thing too is, and I do support this, but just whether or not we need to think about on a go-forward basis of if the lease doesn't actually call for air conditioning of the premises. It does?
Yes. Yeah.
Because that would go to Margot, so I just want to...
That's what I said, it's an...
Yeah.
Yeah. 90 degrees is tough.
Yeah, I mean, and they've taken... Our office manager has gone up pretty much daily and taken readings. And it's just... And I've talked to a couple people that have... One person has rented the place, and it was difficult. And some of the society members brought in fans to move the air. It's just, it's difficult, but...
Do you have artifacts up there? Now, we're...
No. What we will do, and I think we've sent an invitation to the board, is that we will have a reception, and it will be open on... Also open on Bedford Day. And we will have, it's pretty... It's very impressive history of Bedford wall panels. And as, with the help of Ron, we've been able to put two fresh coats of paint. And we have a new floor. It's, you know, it looks really good. And so we're looking forward to our first museum exhibits, Bedford Day. And so it'll make it a lot more comfortable now that we have air conditioning upstairs for the reception.
The motion that was... It's out on the... I've got it, yeah. In our October 19th, 2022 meeting packet, and it is signed by Mr. Cruzar. And it does have the extension. Tenor has the right to send lease for two consecutive renewal terms of one year, and must comply with a law order of tenants' intention for less than 60 days prior to the termination date. So that was different than what we were looking at tonight.
So you have the...
Yeah, so it was in our meeting packet of...
October 24th.
October 24th, sorry. 2022. The date of the lease was October 24th. And the commencement date of the lease was October 31st, 2022, for a term of one year, with the option of two renewal terms.
That's reassuring.
Sure. Well, I mean, everything is in drop box, and we're...
So far, we do want to question that?
Yeah.
I don't have a permit, so I trust you also, maybe, for a question.
We do have to say, "I love warm and hot." We did not have AC at my work. It was... You guys are... For a person that loves hot. So this day was hot, so I'm sorry.
So for two months, it's $5,833. For three months, it's $8,153.
I'm a little torn. I think, Paul, you have a reasonable question. If, you know, what kind of rental income was actually lost to a slightly different number of... You know, what a quarter of the actual rent would be.
I mean, if we're being told it was uninhabitable, I guess it's fair to...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Pritchard, I also have a point. It wasn't just lost. It was, they didn't go out and get further initiation rates where people knew that there was an active situation. It might not even apply.
So you don't have rentals for the town?
Yeah. So I'd be...
And this would take care of the whole... I mean, you're not going to come back because of the September rentals, presumably, so this takes care of it.
Right, I mean, it's working now. So, well, it was today.
But you weren't into book bowls. You weren't into book bowls.
Right, and, yeah. That's reasonable.
So it sounds like from this contract, the one that was actually signed, that it's a dual option. So you have the right to renegotiate anyways without us doing it.
Yeah, I mean, the suggestion of abatement for... Having been able to do it for three months up to this point would be acceptable to the... months up to this point, would be acceptable to the society. And then, we still have time, we've given you the notice, to take another look at the lease until the lease ends, which is, so we have time to take another look at the third floor.
I would also say that, I mean, it's not like a piece of work there, but I do think we as a town should think about whether or not we're, as we rent things, how much of the year, we're not guaranteed air conditioning, right? So, I don't, just, just my thought is that we should be, you know, careful about renting those, is how much they should be as in versus air conditioning. I think, I'm still in favor of this, but something to think about.
Are we ready for questions?
Do you want to make one?
Sure.
I'll move that the select board approve a three-month baitment to the Bedford Historical Society lease of Old Town Hall.
Do you want to state the amount now?
The amount of.
$8,750.
$8,750.
Second.
It's been moved by Sean, seconded by Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye to, that's five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to know, I've been looking through the minutes, especially the last meeting meeting, I need to do better with the question again seconded, because it's been polished off, because the whole time. We gotta get our names in there.
I have moved that in there.
I know.
We have the.
Yes, so the next item is updates to Old Town Hall alcohol policies. So this is truly a housekeeping error, or housekeeping change, update the process to reflect the historical society now, Paul. That doesn't really change it, that's a standard to update and reflect current practice. I would just need approval of this, like, with that language.
I had a couple just copy edited things, compilation stuff, but the effective date should be updated to today, right, if we are approving, so that would be an additional change.
Questions?
Sure. Okay, so I move that the select board approve the updated regulations concerning governing alcoholic beverage consumption at Bedford Old Town Hall, 16 South Road, as amended.
I will second that, just to. Moved by Emily, seconded by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
I voted aye to, that's five, zero, zero. Public safety contract.
Well, I, you officially come up, but earlier this year, the select board approved the management system for the fire department, and now we are, we need to approve the police management system for police department. So it's a bit of a tricky contract, they'll let chief explain the software we're trying acquiring, you know, acquire directly to, so we're contracting with a company to work for that, so.
Thanks for much, thanks for having me here. So the software will help us with computer dispatch, will also be the representative of the software for the police department. We're working in concert with the software the fire department bought. The vendor that provides this is a vendor that's probably done the majority of recent software upgrades in the Commonwealth, five committees I'm very familiar with. So, it's a product called PropheneX, but they don't directly sell through Combox to our state contract, but there are several resellers on state contract, and one that has gotten refused requests over to us, a company called Insight. So the total price is within the amount that's in the budget, of course, and it's $48,406.56. And, I want to hear your questions.
Mark. The only question, I've been familiar with the situation where you use a third-party vendor in order to get the piece of software they want, so that's fine, but my question would be, in terms of implementation and ongoing, I don't know, tech support, or any, if any issues came up, are we establishing, do we have an established relationship with PropheneX such that we will get this service that we need, and we are guaranteed that whoever picked up the phone or answered the email when police department is experiencing some sort of issue, will be qualified person to address that issue with this software?
That's a great question, it's one of the things that came up freely. Dan Leahy, our IT director, is obviously going to be involved in this. We have, we know what it's going to cost in the next five years, and after that five years, part of the contract is it can't go up, maintenance can't go up more than 5% even in the soon years. So, because this is fairly expensive, you really want to ensure that type of thing, so we're never, it's going to be sticker shock. And frankly, I share your thoughts, you know, one throat to choke if you've got a problem, because we're not a big enough talent, we're in the police department. But the experience of people that already have, in the last few years, is that they do it, they are very responsive, calls for service. So we do know what the contract, service contracts are going to be going forward, and, you know, we have a high level of confidence, so respond. Because there are also, frankly, many of our local neighbors are on this, so this, they have a vested interest too. It's not like we're the only police department in the Commonwealth going to this software. So it's a great question, but I think, I think, I feel like we've seen this cost of police departments to answer.
Okay, so just, so I'm clear on what we're, we're paying Insight, but when we need PropheneX to come and address some issue with the software, they, the people who are most specialized with the software and the service that they're getting will be available to us.
So, I'm sorry, you, a hundred percent right, it's PropheneX that answers those calls, and service contracts with PropheneX now.
Okay, perfect.
I'm sorry, I've been busy.
No, no, wait, that's, that's fine, and the procurement issue makes that a little bit more difficult to set out from the contract.
Agreed.
Other questions?
I'll move the select board authorize interim town manager Colin Doyle to approve the purchase of PropheneX software from Insight, as outlined in their correlated page 25th, 26th.
Second. Moved by Emily, seconded by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to five, zero, zero. Thank you, Kate. Next up is a request for appropriation from the historic preservation properties fund.
Our facilities director come up and tell me some questions on this. So this brought in, is a request, facilities department, the other depot park advisory committee, so direct questions to Ron and Joe.
Good evening, I'm Joe Canadosi, Chair of the Depot Park Advisory Committee, and I'm here just to say a few words about the request that we have for funding to complete the work on the depot building. But a little history, back in, at the 2022 annual town meeting, we had requested funding to do the project, which included replacing all of the decking, the railing, and also doing all the paintwork on all four sides of the building. And the paintwork was quite involved, because when we did testing, the old paint that was on there had lead in it, so we had to do some additional remediation work to deal with that. Unfortunately, there was a little mix-up when the funding went through, and we were shorted by about $40,500. I spoke to Mark about that at that town meeting, and she said not to worry, that we could make up the difference using the historic property preservation fund, which is why we're here tonight. What we had to do, combination of that plus the high inflation that we experienced, is when we went out to bid, we reduced the scope of work and did not include the back of the building and the side of the building. When the bids came in, they actually came in around $7,200, higher than the money that we had, so we had to make up that difference, which we did. Fortunately, we have an excellent contractor, all of the decking has been replaced, the railings will be in in a week or two and be installed, and our hope is to complete the rest of the work and do the paint remediation on the back and on the side of the building, and plus some additional repairs if we get favorable bids. We have some rusted drain leaders on the roof that need to be replaced, and we have some masonry work we need to do to the foundation of the building, and also the designer fee. And just to give you a little sense of what we did, the old decking that was on there was very wide, and it was made out of a low-cost pine material, and it walked creating a trip hazard, and it also collected water in the winter time and making it a skating rink sometimes. This new decking that we put on is the same as we did at the freight house. It's i-pa wood, which is a wood that's the same density as steel, same firing as steel, and it'll last for many years. And all the railing is extruded aluminum, which also will last a long time and doesn't offer the splintering hazards that we have with the wood. So, we hope to get the funding to complete the work, we have a contractor that will probably bid on it, as well as some other contractors, and we're just requesting the funding to complete the building work.
For the bond, Joe, what is it to add?
No, Joe summed it up very well. It's, I think it'd be important to get it all done at the same time, you know, if we don't do it now, we're probably looking at the spring, so now we have two sides of the building painted at different times, and that just runs into issues. Some of the other money for the foundation work, you know, it's in a whole week building, we have weeks, you know, within this, this house weather we're having, we have some issues that we'd like to address, so.
So I just want to call attention for other board members who might not be aware of the magic number of $75,000. So community preservation funds have been appropriated out of the community preservation general fund into this historic preservation fund. So they are no longer community preservation funds, however, there is a stipulation that I don't think any appropriation of exceeding $75,000 would have to go back to the meeting. So, under $75,000, the select board has the authority, in the way the fund was created, to utilize the money to benefit the historic property at our discretion. So, that is why when Mr. Canadosi approached me about changing the appropriation of community preservation, I said, well, if it's under $75,000, the select board can have the discretion to utilize it out of that money.
Mark, may I ask you a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, this is why I wanted you to go first, because my question was, are we sure that this is the right number? That's why this is the right.
So it's not to exceed 75, it sounds like you may need all 75, or if you could use all 75, you would use all 75?
Yeah.
But it will not exceed 75, because we can't authorize that.
Have you got a follow-up question?
I think you actually just answered, because they say up to 75, so 75 is okay, sounds sound major.
Correct.
If 75 is all expended, what is the balance in historic preservation, or does it get refilled through CPC?
So that is a CPC question, and generally, as the balance has come down, we have periodically recharged it, we had a goal of keeping the balance at around a million dollars. I'm going to guess off the top of my head that it's somewhere down in the 800s right now, or maybe 700s. So that would be something for the community preservation committee to look at as we go forward with the rest of this budget, this, we want to make any budget amendments at the special town meeting, or in next year's community preservation budget, whether or not they would like to choose to appropriate those funds back in to replenish the money.
Paul? I just want to say I'm fully supportive of this. Mr. Canadosi did take me through the depot area, and I could see that the work definitely needs to be done, but the depot is a big asset to town, so it's a core of the box.
Anything else? Take it. The select board approved the historic properties preservation fund up to $75,000 to use towards the painting foundation repair, downspout repair at the depot station, is that what it's called?
Depot repair.
Yeah.
It's a depot.
It's at, this is at the station building.
The station is the building in the back.
As opposed to the freight house, I think, yeah, I just checked. An additional painting at the depot capacity. Second.
Could I add a further amendment, end design needs associated with that work? Because I understand some of it's still made in design.
Do we anticipate design, basically?
There'll be a little bit, yeah.
Sure, absolutely, and so, for the project end design.
Second. Moved by Mark, seconded by Emily, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is board and committees, there's a reappointment and appointments as well. Colin, how many reappointments do we have?
A lot, I think, because we're not, this isn't half of it.
Okay, great. So just like our past reappointments, whatever it was, just call on the lady, you know, please feel free to share and make the recommendation. So, for the Bedford Housing Partnership, I believe Sean, you are the liaison, correct?
That's me, and I'd be pleased to move Elena Zorin, she's a fellow member, in fact, she's in line to become chair at the ambition, because she's been serving the master, and she benefits the housing partnership. So, I will move that the select board appoint Elena Zorin to the Bedford Housing Partnership for a term ending June 30th, 2026, and authorize the town manager to sign the letter on behalf of the select board.
Second. Moved by Sean, seconded by Emily, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye to five, zero, zero. Emily, you're not to fire station.
Sure, so with the fire station building committee, we've had a little bit of reshuffling as people have retired and moved on. So with Chief Grube's retirement, the interim fire chief, Paul Sheehan, would fill the role of fire chief, which is outlined in the charge of that committee. And then, for, to replace Charlie, who's been the town manager, the office representative on that committee, we recommend Amy Fidalgo as the town manager for operations with the project, and Charlie's staff. So this is essentially two replacements, so, any questions? So I move that the select board appoint Paul Sheehan and Amy Fidalgo to the fire station building committee to replace David Grube and Charlie Tukowski, and authorize the town manager to sign the appointment letters on behalf of the select board.
Second. It's been moved by Emily, seconded by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Apparently there actually is one more. I thought this was the last.
One more?
There is actually one.
Oh. So next is a racial equity vision statement approval. Paul, you weren't here during this time, but last year, we had a presentation by the BMT. As you all know, we were very fortunate to receive a grant to do racial equity municipal action plan, and a bunch of us, consisting of elected clergy stakeholders in the community, we were a part of this training for a year, and we, part of that was to come up with this vision statement, and it was presented to us last year, but we weren't ready to vote. So I'll just pause here, but I do want, I actually could, before I pause, I do want to thank Sarah and Charlie for their leadership on this, and unfortunately, I know Sarah is not here to be a part of this, but I would like for us to discuss this and hopefully move this forward before Charlie leaves. Any questions?
Can I ask you a question? So, this.
So this is great. This is, this reads to me as just a statement force versus an exhortation to Bedford should be a place where all people experience, et cetera, et cetera. It's just any of this. That's the way the folks read it as well?
I think it's presented as a vision statement, so yes. It is a statement of our vision for the community. I think it's maybe a little bit different from a commission statement, the way other organizations have, that implies, you know, there's a lot of actions and directions. I think this is, this is the vision of whoever wants it.
I'm just being a test, because it seems to me that just reading the word, those words alone, starting from people of all races, it just like, that's what it is already. Anyway, just an observation.
Well, I think certainly in any way that this statement is presented, it could be processed with the vision of Bedford is to be a place where.
Strive to.
Right to, or, you know, and then that is the, that is the content. Because I do think a vision statement is generally understood to be aspirational and provide some framework for mission and goals, strategies to accomplish goals.
Well, I'll go back to that. It is a very stable.
The REMAP group, when they presented to us, this was the same revision that they presented at the time, the city lease value statement. And they had recommended to us to take it into consideration, adopt it for the town.
Yep.
Yep. Well, I guess my only question would be, where will it be displayed or will it be on some of the website? What was the REMAP group's intention for this statement and how it would be integrated into a website and the policy of it? Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move that the select board adopt the racial equity vision statement draft as outlined in the memo of December 2023 and devised by the REMAP team.
Second.
First by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, I really appreciate this and I do again want to reiterate and thank Sarah, Stanton, and Charlie Kapinski for their leadership. And I'm really proud of the commitment and inclusion for the town.
Thank you so much, Bill, for your work on that mission. I also just want to point out the next steps as we're talking about DEI as broader. You know, this is specifically about racial equity as we talk about broader measures for diversity and equity. The discipline commission will have the role to play in this, so shout out to them.
Next up, future select board meeting locations.
So few members of the board have expressed concerns about the lack of a second egress from the select board meeting room. So tonight we're meeting here because there was already a meeting scheduled in the select board room. So one option is to continue to meet in the re-room going forward because there are multiple ways of egress in this room. However, there's some limitations of that. Owl is not quite as strong, so we're open with the mic, so maybe that would compensate. You do need to update the technology in this room. The back projector, no hunger, is working all the time or it works and then shuts off halfway through. So that, you have to look into purchasing that. That is not currently on the plan in terms of purchasing. So if that's the occasion and want to meet in this room, having a screen or back for presentation might be difficult, so we have to think about where you would want your, you know, table to be and what room setup you would like. Another option is if we were to try to put a second egress in the select board room, the really only option is to lock the window. We'd have to build some sort of stairs to get to the window, replace the window with some kind of door and then build a deck and stairs down. That also would happen in part of the capital plan, because that has a cost associated with it. Another option would be easier to put a second egress in the second floor conference room, but it would need to be outfitted so Bedford TV wouldn't have to do an independent setup like they have to do every single, they'd have to do it here, which is another limitation of this room. So I think all of those are options. We would just need direction from the board on which one we would like to invest in, if this is something we want to move forward with. So I think it's important discussion to have, but there are just things to consider as well.
Did the fire have any recommendations in particular?
I think it's more we wanted to hear from you and then we would start to process with facilities and the other departments to hear what, if maybe start costing out some of those options.
I'm kind of wondering what the safety implications are of two egresses where you might have two potential openings where someone could come in versus one egress. And if you have a situation where somebody is not supposed to be here, maybe sort of use the one egress.
Usually a second egress would be locked from the outside, it's not a, but not that we expect. It would be like in the emergency room.
Yes, but like tonight, this is not open?
It is locked.
It's locked, okay. Okay, so that kind of answers that question. And long-term, I don't think it would be a bad idea to consider a second egress to the select or, I mean, that probably is a ways off, but just in general.
If, if we are likely to need to change or upgrade the, that giant board that takes up a big chunk of the back corner, is, where does that go? Would that be the same kind of, you know?
Not sure what window they would choose, but there's the one closest.
I'm also concerned about like steps up to it, you know, in terms of accessibility, like depending on the board, that may be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tricky room, because if we were to go out, if you wanted now, into, out to the left, it's a staircase. So there's no way to put a door over there. And putting a door closer to the entrance is putting in the same spot where it already is, which seems to be.
It's not a, yeah.
It would come into that purpose. So if something we can ask the facilities department to look into further if we would like, I guess for the time being, would you want to keep meeting in the select board room? Would you want to keep meeting here? Now, there's some limitations and there are.
Yeah, my concerns about here are just, it's more comfortable to sit in, but people can't hear.
Well, we can always move chairs up, I mean, that kind of far away.
It's not just that. I mean, the mic might not be able to.
Oh, the mic, I got you.
If I put on my substitute teacher voice and speak into the mic, I can do, we can't. Not everybody's going to do that every time.
Well, if some people in this court feel uncomfortable, safety-wise, to me, that trumps the, you know, whether it's vocal enough or communicative. Yeah, it just does. And I think that can be fixed over time, so. I'm happy to go either way, but just if someone's uncomfortable, I'd rather be in here than have somebody, like, everywhere there for comfortable.
And in terms of timeline, it would require buying more technology or different technology. The biggest owl, and this is now, is really for conference room, with thirteen chairs around the table. So we'd have to kind of do some investments in different technologies to make this room work long-term. And then if we wanted to somehow figure out the select board room, that would be an investment too. Capital budget season's coming up and if we want that to take precedent over some of the other items or rank them differently, so that's up to the capital expenditure committee, but that's just also something, I think Amy in our office would like some guidance on if that's something that we should be prioritizing in terms of getting things and that, that cost.
Well, I think that for the utility of the space in town hall, we should be working on improving the acoustics and the technology in this room regardless. And I know the hybrid situation is a challenge because of the owl. And I'm hopeful that maybe there'll be some next-gen owl for all of the cities and towns that are struggling with the hybrid meeting conundrum. And I know that the legislature really wants communities to really embrace hybrid meetings, but the technology is very ill-equipped to do that well. So we did a beautiful room, beautiful job with this room. It's lovely, but it is still challenging from the AB point of view. And I think for any larger meeting, where we do have to move in here, it would be an investment that they would have in. I also think that this select board meeting room should have a second egress. I've thought that for a long time. And I, at very least, to explore what options might be available to us.
We sort of say those.
I think if you're, if you're looking at a long-term plan for town hall, this room has some deficits. That room has some deficits. And even just in the normal course of things, we should be making sure that folks are having a good quality experience when they come to our meetings.
And if those improvements are, you know, vastly different, if it's, you know, ten dollars here and four hundred dollars there, like, that might help us narrow the size of everyone.
So may I ask, what other, what other meeting rooms are there in this building? I know there's one on the second floor, this one down the basement. Do they also have second egress?
They do not, but it's, it would be easier to put a second egress, particularly the second floor conference room, because it goes into what is like employee-only mailroom. Like, it would just be used, it's going through a wall versus going through other.
I guess what I'm thinking is it should be all or none. I think this room already has a second egress, so I think that would be, to me, satisfactory. If we kept meeting in here and we do have a second egress. And I wouldn't feel as compelled to put second egresses in all the other conference rooms, just as my initial thought.
And put our chairs in here?
I would insist we have the chairs. If, yeah, no, no, we need the chairs until this is Paul Morton's. We are an egalitarian board.
I, I, I could go either way. I just do think that this is just something that needs to be changed. So I'm hopeful that we'll just be here for now, but that's what it is.
I think it makes people feel safer. Can I also ask, sorry to miss you at this present here, is that going to be for the foreseeable future to have?
That is a good enough to your request.
I certainly think for the foreseeable future, that would be, that would be important.
In general, I would like for us to be able to be in the select board meeting room. I think that is our space. That is really cool.
It's a little easier to talk to each other and not to curve.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we could curve the table.
Yeah. But that's in case, what we'd like in terms of setup on our, here we want this to move over there to, so you can move chair, I don't know, is that why your back isn't to the screen as much?
I mean, if we, if we curved this way, then we still get to see this coming in. Somebody's going to be like this, but somebody's like that in the select board meeting room.
Yeah, it's usually.
It would make some sense to be back there, because that way you have somebody on the egress, so coming, just don't have the door as opposed to, that's a better.
But there's no way.
Yeah.
And they have to turn the chairs.
In conjunction of that, I mean, that projector's dead, I wonder if it's reasonable to put a screen on the side where it is instead of one.
Yeah, but I think the windows really start to.
Yeah.
Because we use this room for large meetings, we've moved into this room many times when we've needed to. It's not ideal for our meetings.
I have a suggestion. Everybody can have a laptop. I mean, it's hardly that way. That way Bedford people can look up to this room, you know, show it that way. You guys can buy a two V screen, a sixty-inch TV screen for four hundred dollars, hook it up, assist them to that. That way you have visual, you're not using that. The audience can't even see that.
Because they have their own system, they have some sort of system that works, but it has a laptop for like, on the Zoom, but they're still in the room.
And a lot of the.
So everybody looks into that.
It's just, a lot of the times, if we, you know, when we get presentations in our packet, it's great, because I can just call up those slides on my iPad and I don't have to bring my notebook to the screen. That's not always possible, and certainly if we've got virtual participants, that's when they might have to bring their chairs. But I do think to a certain extent, we, we all brought iPads or a digital device where we could either see the materials or connect to the Zoom meeting and just read our audio. That would solve the AV problem for us.
And you can buy a sixty-inch TV these days for four hundred dollars. And if you use the AVs, they hook up the Zoom to that TV. So that way anybody here can see the presentation that you are showing. It's going to save a lot more money to use laptops, iPads, or maybe.
I mean, regardless, systems have to be updated here.
Yes.
I mean, this works temporarily, but.
I'd say we keep trying to improve here.
So maybe we have luck here, we all bring a laptop.
Yeah, we'll test it out. So we need to post, like, meetings being in the select board room, but we, because it's a state building, we can go to sign up to say if it's coming to, identify that AV is.
I do agree with Mark on that, but eventually, I'd like to be back in this, because it's , it's, it's, it's safety.
You're welcome.
Consent agenda.
So here's why we asked to include the list of election workers for term ending April 31st. Second item is Monday, liquor license for this one on September 23rd. And then we got two in 2020, which means we're going to have two positions in time. I have a quick question on the election workers. I noticed that a couple of the folks are not actually Bedford residents, and that's fine, right, for the compliments department? Do I need to move to improve the consent agenda? Are you doing it?
I did. Okay, I moved the consent agenda. I second it.
First by Mark, second by Emily, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, that's five, zero, zero. Town managers report.
So two things tonight, one's on the agenda, it's an art gallery project. So there's a memo in your packet from our housing economic film director, Jeff King. So this is initiated by the cultural council. So samples are in your packet. What we're really looking for tonight is the support of Google, like, their, the concept and the locations of this. So it's kind of a cool little project, a little art, you guys have, you know, if they're through the utility box, it's kind of a similar type of mission.
Can I just add, so this is something that the cultural district working group is very excited about and talking about for quite some time. And it's similar in concept to the little free library, so we have one of those, there's a girl scout over by the top lot, and this would be, there'd be two of them. One over there would be like a permanent thing where you could actually like take art, be art, kind of a community sharing space. And then the one over by the high school would be a place to display student art, and that would be locked and controlled, so the art department would be in charge of what goes in and what's taking.
How will this will be sort of rolled out to the community in terms of both publicizing but then also engaging the artists or even, you know?
I think there's already a bit of engagement. We also have other town departments to help with pouring our puddings, to help, you know, construct these things. I think once it's getting there, we can do a press release and help us with the, the packets.
The board is very excited about it, so that will be pretty large as well.
The room's very excited about it, so that will be pretty large as well.
I hope that we approve the installation of two mini art galleries, one outside of town center and one which we separate the word Jester.
Just one more item, the one they licensed that we discussed at our last meeting, that recalls the top that then has been canceled, so it's no longer, so just want to update you on that.
Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, last item is liaison reports.
Me, yeah.
How about if you look at the next?
Sure. The energy and sustainability committee, but they are extremely excited about the new town manager, who starts, discussing the energy sustainability manager position and excited to hear that he had already familiarized himself with the job description and has some thoughts about moving forward with that. So that was really nice. And then otherwise, just kind of gearing up with some educational opportunities between now and specialty meeting regarding the specialized energy code. There is, there's presentation materials that are available from, from the state essentially and then a speaker from the state who can come and participate in a forum to educate folks about what it is, what it is. And so they're thinking about putting together an event along those lines. Also similarly looking at some sort of public education that work out around the HSTM extension issue that is obviously, you know, people are concerned about the implications for bringing those gas stations and additional jet aviation. Other than that, oh, they also wanted to start to think about, especially with the new town manager coming on, sort of pre-gaming a little bit for when our community aggregation contract is up and just sort of setting out some benchmarks of when the expected time period will be before the expiration of our contract, which is, I believe, is in December of 2024. But making sure that we're engaging the new town manager with our consultants of good energy, of good energy and that everybody is on the same page about the timeframe and ready to go out to bid on the time. That's all.
Thank you.
Let's see, cultural council met last Monday, just to reiterate that that grant cycle opens September 1st and closes on October 7th. So if you are thinking about things, reach out to the cultural council member. Fire sustainability committee also met last Monday. We are starting to see some schematic designs, even seeing our bulletin citizen in preparation for our next appearance before HTC, that's what we're talking about. And there are a lot of trade-offs in those two options, so interested in continuing with those conversations. I think it's, we're going to have a lot of things to talk about. We're also planning to have a booth or part of a booth at Bedford Day just to answer some questions about, you know, the new fire station and particularly to point out like, here's what we currently have and here are some examples of things that modern fire stations have. So like, here is Lexington's decontamination room and this is what a normal decontamination room looks like these days. So to get people to kind of understand what are the components that are going to go into this building. So we're on that. You might talk about more of this. I went to the railroad day on Saturday and it was really cool. So thank you to the Deportant folks and all the volunteers. Last thing I have is about handsome and hats. I did send our approval of the hats letter to our conference in Lexington. Hats meets again September 21st, something like that. So we'll see what the other boards have to say if there are further comments to bring that to you. I know that some folks at Save Our Heritage had some talking points that they were distributed into the other select boards, so those would be incorporated in further comments. I did see a letter or a article in Concord's paper that the Concord Select Board had voted to seek legal assistance to try to get public records about the North Korea project, about the development, about all of the sales outcomes that went up to this point. No one has approached me about this. I don't know that anyone's approached other people in town about like joining forces with Concord. That was the first that I had seen of it, but I just wanted to call that to your attention. And on a similar note, so on September 28th, the League of Women Voters and Mothers Up Front and Save Our Heritage and the Vote Act, I think, are sponsoring kind of an informational forum about the North Korea project. Neil Rasmussen from Save Our Heritage is going to speak. Bill Kitten from Third Echo, heard it's an environmental activist, Far Beyond Just Our Local area is going to speak. And I have been invited to be the third speaker and I wanted to bring that to you all if you have questions or concerns. What I had said in response to the invitation is like, I can come and speak, but if I'm representing the town, like I'm basically going to say kind of the same presentation that I gave to HVAC that built off the letter we sent to the government. Like here are concerns about infrastructure and impacts on the community. I can't advocate one way or the other. You know, and the other speakers I think are going to be advocating for a particular position. So I wanted to keep your temperature. Are you comfortable with you being a part of that? Are there talking points I should be emphasizing or not? You know, I do think it's important to have a better voice than that to be able, I know there's going to be a lot of folks that are interested, but I'm just, I'm conscious of our position as a town, which seems to be, you know, if development is going to come, here are the things that we need to be concerned about. And I think the other speakers are more concerned about making sure development does not come. So that's.
That's what you say. I think that's great.
Yeah, I mean, I feel comfortable with you representing the town. I mean, if you're interested, you want to just follow generally what you're saying.
I mean, I think I'm just going to do the slides that I did at the HVAC that you would July.
And I think also we can come to the fact that we are submitting to the letter to Governor and we are encouraging her to.
To do what she can because.
No, I mean, as a part representative to those regional entities, I think you already do speak appropriately on behalf of the town and I don't see reason why you could continue to represent. We don't need to vote, do we?
Sean, I forgot, I was. No, that's Sean.
DSP did not need to be included in the form of, I mean, again, in September, we're going to take up issues of having a liaison to the AEST, the working group between the DSP and us, myself and some of the other stuff that I'm talking about. As to what I know, I mean, so thank you for Bedford Day. That was really nice. Thank you especially to the building because you could have accomplished great presentations. There was a walk around the area with the historic significance of some of the buildings. I learned a lot from that and the presentation given in the real time, which is excellent. Planning on Tuesday did approve the, I'm not even reminded of the railroad out developments that corner opposite the depot, it's no.
Extra rust.
Extrabust, exactly. There's no taking the town, I think, I know some people spoke about the last meeting that there was some confusion about that. The approval of this development was, will include potentially a restaurant. The restaurant is saying that a pizza shop is interested in the barbecue section. Of course they have to look for barbecue, but I guess we get what we get. They will need though approval from us on street parking, which you have to work to get it done here. And also approval to take down the vegetation that now which plays a lot of the laser species and replant some things. And then the development to take off of that. Also MDTA community zoning, there was some talk about that. I know that's been an issue for a long time. The planning board is actually thinking of putting out a survey with everything those feedback and how we should respond to that.
And the changes in that law from the legislature, the Congress or whatever that was in.
The law has kind of evolved.
I'm sorry. It just, because when Sean mentioned the Vote Act development, it reminded me of two things. First of all, I forgot to report, TAC, Transportation Advisory Committee did meet last week as well, finalized some of their prioritization of different projects and then also talked about continuing to work with the town to identify impediments to being able to increase the number of projects that we are able to do or the duration, shorten the duration of time that it takes from inception to completion of projects. So that's an ongoing dialogue. But then also at energy and sustainability, they had members of BART there to talk about the proposed changes to the tree policy and also things like replanting, we said, that's a trip around the second base species. They presented to energy and sustainability, but then members of TAC also were there to listen to the presentation because there's a lot of interest in collaborating around this updated tree policy to ensure that we understand the impacts to potential projects involving non-vehicular transportation services and such.
Speaking of the tree policies, the status.
They are going around to different departments explaining what they are closing, committee thread, yeah, committees are better, yeah. So they were at, they were at energy and sustainability, but I think that they may be swimming around and now talking to TAC as well.
I believe the mega September agenda, I'm not completely positive.
And, you know, it was talked about quite a bit, energy sustainability, I think, is reported, so have that opportunity to watch that.
Thank you. I don't have much. 300th anniversary is meeting next week on Wednesday, August 30th at 7:30. I want to thank the town departments and the hotel and everyone for their effort with migrant families, you know, especially the health department. I think, you know, for both everyone's, I stopped by Starbucks, I see people go on their way there to help. So I really appreciate your effort, chief, and everyone that's, has been involved. So thank you.
I know that there are a lot of people who really should come to help. I want to bring backers, I want to do that kind of stuff. When are we going to have instructions for how to do that?
We're hoping to release something on Monday. We are going to get some things in a row before we can really actually meet. So we'll have a better update for you all on Monday. If folks want to make the same announcement, that's cool. We'll be Tuesday.
Excellent. Thank you.
And last but not least, I just want to thank Chief Fisher for being with us. We really appreciate you. Can I have a motion?
So who?
Second. So moved by Emily, seconded by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye to five, zero, zero, and we are adjourned on that.